Welcome the audience and thank you for attending. Viewers may watch Board of Education meetings and Board Committee meetings live at TCAPS.net/Board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Please rise and join Ms. Woods' first grade class from Silver Lake Elementary in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Yep, we are at the review approval portion of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second Beth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Moving on to public comment, seeing there is public comment. The Board has set aside this time for public comment and individuals addressing the Board should have one opportunity to speak and shall be limited to three minutes. Individuals should not make personal attacks unrelated to actions affecting the school system and we strongly encourage common courtesy and constructive feedback. Detailed rules and procedures including a complaint process are outlined in Board Policy 0167.3. Stacy?
Yep, speaker is Bill Weisner.
Bill Weisner, Travis Seele. I'd like to speak on the books again. In the libraries, 500 Promoting Homosexuality, TC West, Not One on the Other Side. Here's some that I have that present the other side. Are some of them written by Christians? Yes. Many of them have historical evidence that this was just... The whole movement was pushed on us, starting with Alfred Kinsey, many steps in between. And so, I just would urge you to have books on the other side. You say you want, I've heard in some of the comments for the candidates, that you want the kids to be thinking from all the information and not book banning on them. So, get some books like these, put them in the library at the very least. That would at least balance things out. Still, we have the idea of sexualizing the children too. And if you look from what I put up about Audrey Werner, her talk, looking at the comprehensive sex ed, exactly, she was a trainer. They taught her to talk to the kids, get them real comfortable, like Dan McGee said. First day they come in a little uncomfortable, but then within a day, I have them all real comfortable. That's what she was trained to do. And then going through describing all this stuff, it sexualizes the kids. So, this is a list of books. This is one that the Public Library about 15 years ago wouldn't allow in their, in the books. Alfie's Home, it's about this young, young boy who was molested as a child. And the dad explaining how you can have confusion with this, but you're not born this way. That's what, they wouldn't take it because the pictures were flat. Well, I'll tell you, the content is not flat. The content is what they're not describing. And I've looked at, I've got a list of 18 of the books from, it's on TC West or TC Central. I looked at both of them and their books and it shows excerpts from them. And I'm reading like one page and it's like, wow. You know, you don't want to go on, it's just, it's not good. So, I'll be getting that information out soon. And I noticed when I was looking on the gay-straight alliances that were mentioned, that were at TC West, high school and middle school, and probably at TC Central, high school and middle school. And there are some things going on in those that aren't, aren't good. And I looked at, well, I only got eight, but for that, or, I'm out of time. But thank you, please consider these things. Get some books on the other side.
Alright.
That's the only public comment.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Study session, obviously the point of the meeting, moving on and deferring to Dr. Van Wagner.
Okay, so this is our fourth study session for the year. And so, the Board had asked to have a presentation related to some general budget formulation process. And so, our Assistant Superintendent Christine Thomas-Hill has put together a presentation for you today. Y'all have a copy of that. Again, it was posted as well online Friday, for anybody that might want to also see that. So, I'm gonna go ahead and pass over her to get started.
Alright, here for a treat. So, looking at this as a study session, but also as kind of a learning series, we have a lot of information that's available on our website and a lot of information that comes to you in booklets that are nearly 180 pages. We don't expect you to know that information or where to find it. So, I thought I would start off with showing you how to find certain informations in case you'd like to look at other books or other years. So, starting off with where this information is housed. We have information on, under, about departments, business office and licensed programming, that department. When you click on that, this is what comes up. We have several years available of budget reports, a few years of financial reports. And at the very bottom, you can see, if you expand the archived, it actually expands even more. So, if you wanted to look at information for any of these years, it's available. I'm gonna focus on the most recent budget book for fiscal '25 and I'm gonna focus on the most recent, up until maybe two weeks from now, you'll have the most, most recent. But I'll focus on the '23 annual report because the '24 is not quite ready for presentation. So, really, when we talk about how we develop our budget, is really, it is an annual process. There's something for every month related to current bud, current budget or upcoming budget or potentially a budget amendment. So, when we look at January, January is key as it relates to determining major changes that are desired to be made either in formulas, allocations and staffing. The reason why it's so important in January is really to give the business office time to get the formulas kind of hashed out and presentable for the budget managers and the schools. We need that amount of time to do that. So, if there are changes to, let's say, a formula of student to staff ratio or anything else for that matter, that's something that we would be asking for a decision by January. So, it's good that we're talking about information as early as October, should the Board wish to make any changes or the Superintendent. In February, we're really looking at monitoring our state aid budget and the process. So, sometimes as early as February, we'll get either the House, Senate or the Governor's proposal for the next following year. We're not always that lucky to get it that early. We get some information of what we've heard, but we really try to wait for at least two of the parties to give information before we present it to finance and have a conversation about the differences, where we think we're gonna land. It's always best to have all three and trying to decide which one we're gonna go with as far as estimating our budget. It, it's very unlikely we would ever know as early as March or April what our actual budget is for the following year as the state's fiscal year is October to September or July to June. So, we usually don't know what we're going to get, it's usually our best prediction. We also have a supplementary count day in February that actually contributes to 10% of the pupil count for the following year. These counts remain uncertified until July, so it takes a long time to really get our formal count numbers that are certified and audited. We continue the allocation, implementation project, process as it relates to meeting with staff. We have formal and detailed review of staffing, of allocations that are in preparation of mission-based budget. So, we're looking at how many staff are assigned to each school building based on the formulas we currently have or changed formulas in the future. And we're looking at the other allocations as it relates to things that may or may not come out of their FTE budget. We're looking at budgets by department. Obviously, we have a couple of big, big departments that we have to look at staffing and what the impacts are. Transportation, do we have less routes, do we need less hours, how many vacancies do we have? So, we're looking at that detail. In March, we're really finalizing the budget allocation and the implementation process for the preliminary. Again, preliminary, we're using the best information we have and moving forward. Mission-based budget packets are sent to buildings, very detailed information as it relates to how many teachers are being allocated, social workers, counselors, et cetera. And all of the calculations and formulas are different by, by grade span. In April, we're really talking about the entire process and the department budgets are typically finalized by then. And we're constantly reviewing our state aid status. So, we get a state aid report once a month. We have many changes on that consistently. Some are prior year changes. We, it's not abnormal to get a prior year change months after you close a fiscal year. So, we're looking at those changes. We're also looking for upcoming allocations to see if any of them have been finalized. A lot of them at this time are estimated. And then in June, as you know, the Board has to formally adopt an original budget, whether we know what we're getting or not by law. And at the same time, we bring the final amendment to the previous year. So, we wrap up one year and we start to look at what next year look like, looks like. And we have the Board approve that and have conversations about those assumptions and some of the things that may change, given what's going on with the budget process at the state level.
Before you move on, can we ask some questions on that slide? Okay, I'm interested in the budget allocations and the formulas. Can you, that's, you know, the January bullets. Can you describe how that's mission-based and what exactly are formulas?
It's coming up on a future slide, so I will get to that.
Even the formulas? Okay, 'cause I saw your mission-based slide, but alright. And then that last bullet on, under February, when you talk about the department budgets?
Yep.
Do you get, do you get input from the curricular departments, STEM, all the core ELA, math?
Yeah, so the curriculum budget really is its own department budget and it's overseen by Jessie and Dan, mostly Jessie. As it relates to determining all the different funding sources, it's, no one department budget is easy. It's very complex, especially curriculum, as it relates to what funding sources they have available to them and what those restrictions are. So, Sandy works very closely with Jessie on what their budget looks like in a plan for the upcoming year to make sure they can spend the money and make sure they can spend it in the ways that they would like to based on the funding source. And I have information about the curriculum budget coming up as well. How do we prepare a budget amendment? Again, it's almost an annual, year-long process. So, in July, we're really heavily finishing the field work for our auditors. Again, we're looking at our state aid payments for adjustments to prior year. It's typical that we'll see some in July and August for the prior year adjustments. We are at that time continuously, July, August, September, looking at grants. All of them have different due dates as it relates to applying for them, amending them, finalizing, applying for them, reporting on them and drawdowns as it relates to expenditures and receiving the funds back for the expenditures that we have. Again, August, we're finalizing grants if applicable, depending on what those due dates are. And we're starting to create our annual report book for presentation. It's a very early start to creating the book. We really don't submit it for the auditors to finalize until October and then we present it to the Board with our auditor present in November at the Board meeting. So, we're in process right now. In September, again, continually applying for and amending grants, finalizing the annual report. And then October is, is pretty heavy and finalizing that reporting, getting it ready for distribution. We're again reviewing our state aid payments for adjustments to the current year possibly and sometimes the prior year. And then we have our annual count day. So, our count day in October counts for, 90% of our pupil count for the current year. So, February in 2024 and the October in '24 go to the current year budget. And then, we're looking at submitting the report. So, we have some rules and regulations how we submit the annual report, the audit. We have a submission to MDE. We also have a submission to, it's called FIT, it's our financial information database for all schools. That's how they get a lot of information for comparables and some of the goldens they put up on your rankings. That's where they get that information from. In November, again, we're constantly reviewing state aid and what changes there may be as it relates to all of our allocations, especially categoricals, which sometimes are restricted, sometimes they're unrestricted, each one is different. We are really looking at our benefit structure. So, November is the timeframe that we get our changes from our health insurance provider and what the cost increases are. This, this year, we could have seen upwards of a 14% increase. We decided to change our prescription plan, so it really only had a 3% increase impact because of that change. But we're constantly evaluating that and working with the union groups on what that might look like. And then we're sharing that with staff and giving everybody the opportunity to change their insurance based on the new cost for the upcoming January. So, our healthcare insurance is January to December and we have open enrollment October to November, so people can make changes based on the new cost and the deductions per payroll.
Which is fantastic, 'cause I think like in the private sector, we're seeing 20 to 30, 35% increases this year. It's one of the worst years.
This was one of our highest years, which forced us to make a change on the prescription plan.
Yeah, I think you're saying some people really question how they're gonna do in the private sector, so. It's just, I was kind of worried about that one, so.
So, that's pretty much October, November as it relates to staff and that, that open enrollment process for changes. We're looking at our staff cost. Really, after count day, we're trying to do an overall audit of where staff are placed, what vacancies we need to budget for, making sure we have the correct staff member costs associated based on the position they're in. We could have had a vacancy that we budgeted for early on in the mission-based budget process, then they hired somebody, now we have a true cost of that particular employee. So, we're making those adjustments throughout those, this timeframe. And then December, again, looking at some changes. December typically is when we get some final allocations for our grants, specifically speaking, our federal grant, our consolidated grant, which is our Title I, Title II, Title III grant structure. At that time, we probably will know the other biggest grant source that we have, a state grant called At Risk. It's 31AA. We were just recently informed unfortunately that this year's allocation is gonna be drastically reduced, but we don't know how much. We haven't gotten that information, just so that it's gonna be lower than what they had initially anticipated, which is what we budgeted off of. So, we'll wait to see what that change is gonna be on our state aid payment. Hopefully, we'll have it by December, so we can make the adjustments in our budget amendment.
What's the rough dollar amount either currently?
We have no idea.
Was it currently, I guess?
What's the current total of At Risk?
Just shy of $4 million.
What was that? Just shy of $4 million is our 31AA allocation.
But they sent us a letter saying it's gonna be reduced and didn't tell us by what.
Isn't that the one that was the historic $1 billion though, for the total for the state this year?
But they changed the formula to, to the different opportunity indexes and so, we are probably following an opportunity index. And so, we are getting cut while some other schools are getting increases based on poverty levels.
Yeah. And we're like 36% district average, and so, they're looking for even higher levels of poverty than that.
Yep.
Okay.
A question about that, and that is because you don't do the free and reduced lunch. Now, do you still track that data?
We do, and we still collect forms.
Can you, but are they handed in so that they're very representative or is it kinda?
It, we do okay, I think, you know, we would love to have a few more. We try and encourage it from that standpoint. And we do talk about that grant dollars and those things matter. So, you know, we'd love to still try and, and be able to get more of those forms. I think it'd help a little bit, I don't know it would change us, I don't know if it would be enough to change that opportunity index or not, but it couldn't hurt.
I apologize if I missed this, did you say when we'll know that final number?
Well, we hope to know in December, but I can't say for sure. They, they don't have a timeframe, but they have to abide by. Other than their fiscal year.
That's too bad.
So, then in January, we're just kind of repeating the process all over again, looking at state aid, prior adjustments, current year adjustments and start to think about what changes we might wanna have for formulas, et cetera, as it relates to general fund grants. And by this time, we're not really hearing much from the government or from Governor, House or Senate as it relates to what numbers could be, but they're starting to talk. So, then we get into the mission-based budget process. It was asked, what does that mean? Really, there's a couple of different ways that you can do mission-based budget or budgeting in general. There's traditional, that is essentially rolling last year's budget and making adjustments. We do that, we do a traditional process that's called mission-based budget 'cause it's very much tied to our goals. So, as we're looking at how we fund things, we very much look at the goals set by the Board. And by each individual line item, we're talking about how we're spending our money. So, really, when you talk about the first phase, there's a lot in here that are impacting, a lot of expenses that we have are impacting all of these goals. For example, instructional coaches. When we look at mental and emotional health, we have the, the new clinic. We have added social workers, counselors, the school success partnership. Misty and the program she's working on as it relates to community connections. When we're looking at strategies for student behavior, we again have instructional coaches, curriculum support. We have our positive behavior intervention system. So, there's a lot that we look at. So there's a lot that we look at to uh relate exactly back to the goals that have been set by the board for our expenditures. Um so the other option, one of the other options that we did actually um take a stab at in oh eight, oh nine was zero-based budgeting. We didn't go to the extent of starting over from scratch, really zero-based budget is starting over from scratch and having every school or department justify all their expenses. That is somewhat of a waste of time when you know you have to have a school with a principal and a custodian and it seems silly to justify every expense when we know there's things that they absolutely have to have to open their door. So um we roll our budget and then we look at our mission. Uh we tried in O A to do somewhat of a zero-based budgeting and it was nothing short of a nightmare. Sandy's probably cringing, cringing over there when we tried this. It was very difficult. Um one of the difficulties we have is, as it relates to staff, staff have different costs. And we do have to put the staff cost, the exact staff cost to the building itself for a lot of reasons. Uh we have some um checks and balance in place as it relates to special ed, maintenance of effort, making sure that we're spending enough general fund money uh for special ed as we are traditional students. Um we also have for our consolidated grant, what's called a comparability report, making sure that schools that are getting Title One are getting as much uh general fund money that we're not supplanting. So there's a lot of reasons why we have to uh do our budget that way and there's a lot of things that are tied to how we give our money out. Um so the staff uh costs can swing dramatically when you have a senior staff member or somebody that might be coming in on the lower end of the staff. So at that time, what we really struggled with was having a lot of contingencies budgeted, which felt like we uh were actually not spending as much money as we could 'cause we had contingencies budgeted for vacancies in case somebody fills out that was on the high end. If they brought him on the lower end, we had to chuckle money, we didn't know what to do with, and it kinda was after the budget process. So it didn't feel like we were utilizing our resources to the best of our ability. I, uh go ahead Julie, if you would click on M B B up at the top, there's a link there that shows all of our formulas. Um none of these will make sense and um I can try to explain as much as pro- uh as possible how they came to be. And I have information later that will show how some of our um formulas have gotten to be a little bit higher as it relates to historical reductions we've had over the years. Um so we're looking at uh elementary has one set of formula um allocations. Uh on kindergarten, uh our um allocation process is twenty-five students to one, and that is its own allocation. The first through fifth grade is a separate allocation altogether. So we take the total number of first through fifth grade students and divide by twenty-seven point eight, and then we round it out. Uh we have some kind of differences as it relates to to central grade with tag students, Montessori. They actually have their groupings differently by grade, so we look at those a little bit differently. And then automatically off the top, we give an additional teacher to Blair and Trevor sites. We started that quite some time ago based on need. So that's the formula we're at right now. How did we get to twenty-seven point eight? You can look through some of our documents on historical reductions and we did have to increase class size quite a few times over the years to save for budget uh purposes when we had some drastic reductions and it hasn't really been changed. Um overloads, uh we look at that um throughout the whole mission-based budget process, all the way through the end of August. Um when they meet these particular numbers by grade, uh the certified staff member can have a three-hour classroom assistant or um they can take extra funding. There's a lot of reasons why in a particular class, a teacher might prefer to have the funding. Sometimes you have a couple of adults already in the classroom for special ed and by s- at some point, there's so many adults in the classroom that it actually is a little bit more um distracting. Uh so it depends on the class uh composition and the teacher itself and their preference and how things are going with their students. Um and then we allocate separately at the elementary level, social work, behavior intervention, et cetera. If you wanna scroll down Julie, we have um some changes. One of the things that I wanna kinda show you that is the biggest challenge we have, if you show that whole chart there Julie, I don't know if we can zoom in, but this is, this is one of the things that we spend a lot of time on. So this is the class makeup for Travis Heights Elementary. Now, we already add an extra F T E off the top. So when we're looking at class size and the conversation about split classrooms, this is the challenge we have. I don't know if you can hover over fourth grade there Julie at the top. So in fourth grade at Travis Heights Elementary, they have thirty-five students. So if you don't want to run a split classroom, you have one classroom of thirty-five students and that may or may not be feasible based on the makeup of the class or the actual size of the classroom itself. Or you have two sections of seventeen. Uh to have two sections of seventeen, you add, have to add another F T E to accomplish that. And this is where it gets really difficult. And so instead of adding an extra staff member to have two seventeen, we created a split between the third and fourth grade. So so that you don't have one class of thirty-five. So for each individual building, it really just gets difficult as you look at the total number of students per grade if you try to keep straight grades. And these scenarios are at every building. Um it's more challenging at the um elementaries that have lower enrollment, but it's a difficulty at each building, just depending on how many students they have. So that's where it becomes very challenging.
And have we always, have we always had open enrollment for um uh people to enroll in other schools that aren't necessarily within their?
As far as I can remember, when, when did choice really start to be big? Do you remember John, what year choice really became big and where?
Really started almost like proposal A time, right, in the like mid nineties?
Yeah.
You just started across the lot. Um when charter schools really started opening some things like that, that people had more choice of schools, you know, and they opened boundaries, a lot of that happened.
So what are our legal obligations and and what are our legal right, you know, of, what's our legal authority as a district to put some boundaries on that?
You have full rights too, but what essentially, um your your school of choice from out of district coming in, um we have an inter-local agreement across the I S D. We do not generally take students from outside of our I S D. Um so for instance, from Wexford County or um, you know, outside, but and then, you know, you do have the ability even say, we are going to limit, you know, amount of students per grade. You can from that standpoint, or you can say you don't participate at all, you know, from that standpoint. But again, it's when the funding formula changed in nineteen ninety-four from property tax funding to the school aid fund, that's sales tax of, you know, and and lottery and those components. Now every student that walks in is determined that dollar amount. Now there are many districts around us, almost all of them now are out of formula because in nineteen ninety-four, their property values were higher than the foundation amount they'd get from the state, so they stayed that way. And that is a competitive disadvantage for us, because many of them with their property values collect fourteen, fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars a student compared to, you know, the the nine thousand, low over nine thousand we get.
Yeah, that's interesting. Um so like within a given district then, we have school of choice. But if we have some schools where people are choosing to try to place their kids there and other schools that don't, do, does the district have that legal?
We do, and we did, and we did this year. We did limit down the amount of enrollment at our city, our three at at uh Eastern, at Central Grade, um as well as uh Willow Hill, just because space. Um you know, we limited quite a bit down to try and limit those and, but that, remember, that it's interesting, like Eastern this year, like when you look at Spitzer, whatever, it can have an inverse relationship, 'cause if you don't take as many kids, where before you could fill out a section and you could actually eliminate it 'cause you had more kids. So you have to choose, you know, it it you can, you know, it can be a a crap shoot either way, the way that falls. And so this year, we did cap to make sure we had space for move-ins in those buildings. Willow Hill, we don't have any more room um at this point, so it was in Central Grade. We obviously don't wanna get bigger because we've gotta move in here. So we did for the first time and limit that down quite a bit, worked with the principals um to have, have quite a bit less of that in district um and out of district move-in school of choice. But you 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 can make that decision in any building, how many you wanna take, all that element, you know, you the totally have the ability to make that decision.
But once you accept a kid through s- school of choice, then that child is yours.
Correct.
Until they leave the system.
That is correct.
Yeah, the the really limiting factor was the younger siblings this year, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so that will be co- it sounds like that has to be constantly evaluated.
It does.
It's a puzzle every year.
What you want to get until?
You sat through our conversation.
Yeah, we had Erica sit in on the conversation with the uh Eastern, I think, right, or yeah. And you know, to see, and we sat with Jonathan and talked about that, and we talked about, okay, here's what our number is. What point do we go where we don't take anymore so that we make sure if four kids move in and they're in that, in that enrollment district, that we have room and we don't shoot the class up to thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, but you know, but you know, that's the hard part. You know, and and sometimes we might be compared to a a local protocol or whatever, it just goes, when they stop, we don't take any more kids. The public school, they live in that boundary, we we have to take them. And so that's the challenge that we have in this whole mix.
And then in addition to that, then you had teachers that didn't want the splits that said, you know, I'll take a a bigger load in my class, number of students, um which that can vary teacher to teacher. And then we s- you know, then we're, we did get letters from parents saying there's thirty kids in my kids' third grade class. So it's it's a challenge, I mean.
And and you have those elements in every single building across our district. You know, that's the harder part too, is that we were actually looking kinda, playing or looking like at portage schools. And Portage School is almost the same size as us and took a look at that element. I talked to their 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 superintendent, they said, we don't have much shifting, but they have, I think, four less elementary schools with the same student population we have. Okay, but because we're three hundred square miles compared to less than twenty that they think they are, this is the challenge that we have. When you're, when you're Kingsley and you only have one school and one element, much easier than trying to balance that out across all these elementaries on far boundaries, if you think Cortade to Westwoods. You know, you can't just say, well, we'll take four kids from that one and send them over to there. That's the real challenge that we have a disadvantage of because of our geog- geography that a lot of districts, especially our size, do not have those challenges. But they run elementaries at, some even at six hundred. You know, in that element, because they get efficiencies with being able to balance those numbers out easier.
And when you, so trying to predict, I know, I mean, it's like the million dollar question, but um I guess from a board perspective, something that we struggled with is that last minute, the week of school, the night of parent conferences, or you know, how can we prepare? And is, are there things that we're looking at to try to improve that? And I don't know if now is the right conversation to have that, or if it's still just the unknown right up until the last, you know, and I know we get enroll, you know, kids that enroll at the last minute, like.
The day of.
Yeah, we get kids the whole first week of school, and it can be triplets in one grade that has that that impact. You know, we the, we've used the same process we've always used, the timing is a challenge, um but we go based on what we know.
You know, the only thing you could do is you could build a cash contingency, you know, from that standpoint, but then you gotta find a teacher. You know, and some of those elements that are tough, that, you know, with more money, you can do a lot. But you know, it's just how you wanna try and go about that and and uh, you know, I we, you know, with Dan coming, we have had some conversations a little bit about, you know, once, you know, we kinda have specials, all figured out, all that. But again, you know, if if uh it were to take another teacher to do all that or whatever, we have to have an approval and understanding from the board that there's that extra money and what are you, what are you taking away from to build that contingency? You know, and we can do that, but we try and run so, stretch every dollar to have for everything that you're going to sacrifice something to have that that you may or may not need.
Yeah. Yeah, just piggybacking on that, is there a deadline by which um families that have a child live, live within the district boundaries but not within the boundaries of a given school, have to request that they place their child? So that you at least know like by August first, for example, if somebody lives in Cortade wants to go?
We do, but then we have a waitlist from that standpoint, so if there is a slot that becomes available, but like this year, I don't think we had any, like, you know, the.
Yeah, we usually look around May fifteenth for the deadline and we can let people know um that have asked for open enrollment schools of choice, if we're able to accept at that point, still leaving the buffers per grade if we have move-ins. And we are very clear with them that you can stay on the waitlist. We won't be revisiting that until August if you wanna wait, so we recommend that you enroll elsewhere, but some stay on the waitlist.
Okay.
Because we can have people move out, so it it could drastically change from May to August. But we do have an initial deadline where we're communicating with them, so they have some information to base their decision on. Alright, if you wanna scroll down Julie, then we just get into uh middle school and high school, and these ones are really weird. Um so at the middle school level, um uh students take seven classes, but teachers teach six sections. And so that has to be figured in to make sure we have enough teachers to teach the sections and still have prep. Um currently, the formula is tw- twenty-seven point one five. You know, it's historical, it's changed over time with budget reductions. Um and out of that total F T E, they cover teachers, social workers, counselor, and librarian. Um we have been fortunate uh the last uh couple of years actually to get some grants that we're able to fund, fund uh extra staff at um both uh middle school, well, elementary, middle, and high school. So the middle schools, we have an extra social worker or behavior interventionist, depends on what they were able to fu- to hire. Um that's completely outside of their F T E, we have an extra counselor, that's grant-funded. And then we also have um an extra one point O that is discretionary for them to match the extra that we did at elementary for the coaching. Um and then the non-certified, they all have different allocations and formulas that have been played with over the years. Um and then we have set amounts, so principals, there's four F T E that's allocated. And then there's a site budget, there's a hundred and ten dollars a student that's discretionary um for a lot of things, paper, supplies, um a lot of other things that they'd like to do.
Just curious, why did EMS get an extra counselor if I'm an?
They all did, based on the grant funding.
They, they only had two when West had three.
Okay.
The same with principals, we did, at one point, they only had three and they were one down. And so to to balance out so that every grade had one before, they were just split by letter between two. So that was one of the things that the staff talking and and principals felt like if it could be equally, you know, while uh we'll tell you, East Middle School, it is from a enrollment standpoint, the difference from straight formula, it says two. But you know, we did make that, I made that decision to make it the same so that they would be able to operate and the building just runs smoother from that standpoint by having a counselor for each grade and a principal for each grade.
I just have a question about the elementary coach allocation, I don't understand how that works with. So our middle school coaches are paid?
From general fund and the elementaries are out of thirty-one double A, which is our At Risk funding.
Okay.
It's just different pots.
Yep.
It's different pot, that's right. And what's allowable under those pots, so that's allowable under thirty-one instructional coaching is allowable at that.
Okay.
And your coach is an academic coach, not athletic.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Academic and behavioral.
Yeah, both.
Okay. I got it.
And then um when we look at high school, it looks even more weird. Um at the high school, Central and West specifically, their average class size is much higher. They have a certain number of students that actually leave for half of the day for career tech, but they get the funding for those students. And there's a lot of other things that are very different. Again, they have to pay for uh teachers, social workers, counselor, librarian, um for, out of their F T E allocation. But we also had some extras, uh the one point O extra from social work, I can't recall what that's funded out of at this time.
That's an E three grant.
Okay. Um and then we have uh extra general fund. Again, we were matching the elementary coach allocation out of general fund. And then they have their non-certified uh support, which has various different allocations. Uh principals set at four and their site budget is two hundred and forty-five per student. Some of it's discretionary and some of it is dedicated for tuition for dual enrollment in early college. Which has been a challenge as it relates to the tuition rates going up. And then Travis City High School is the weirdest of them all. Um when this was started as an alternate high school, alternative high school, we really wanted to run it like a business and see if it was cost neutral, if you will. So we actually give them the full foundation allowance per student that they have enrolled, less seventeen percent for that um overhead. And what they pay for are the direct costs, so all of their staff and benefits, supplies, utilities, plowing, custodial technology. And we really have gained knowledge over the time that really an average class, building size of two hundred students is really where the sweet spot is to make sure you're covering all your costs. And that's been a challenge the last few years, which is why we're uh been expanding opportunities, the Compass Learning Center, uh making sure we have more opportunities for students that uh have different learning styles.
So you were like a hundred and sixty? Wasn't it like a hundred and sixty-ish?
We're at about a hundred and seventy right now.
Hundred and seventy.
That includes about fifty, fifty-five are fully virtual.
Oh, okay.
But it's been lower than that in the years past, right? Hasn't it been down to like one twenty-four?
Well, without the. Well, without the Compass Learning, they were at what, eighty?
Yeah. Yeah, they were, they were below a hundred at the start of the year, yeah. They probably would be right around a hundred.
Ever since COVID, we haven't really gone back up.
Do we have any excess space at Traverse site, um, Traverse City High School?
We do, and that's what we built, the out of the Maverick Center, we've built the Compass Learning Center out of.
Right, but now with that, do we have any leftover space?
Well, we use a lot of, so Generations Ahead has space there, we have a daycare center there.
And we have G S R P.
And we have G S R P there as well, so not really.
We're we're at capacity now.
Pretty, yeah, I mean, you know, I I think that um, capacity as far as the sections we're running, but. There's some pretty low sections, I mean, it's, I will tell you, this is, it this has been a budget, you know, a budget issue for us. And so we are hopeful of what we're doing, that we're able to bring that to hit that two hundred number, to at least break even. We think it's a, we know the board's input is a super important program. I will tell you, most districts across the state have got those programs because of, most have gone to one hundred percent virtual programs. Um, I think collectively, we think that that onsite, having that opportunity for kids to go there, the services that are provided, and that's really important. But it has been, you know, it it has hurt our budget from that standpoint in detriment in that way. But again, we feel, and I think the board has given me direction, that it's been that important of a program for those very at-risk students to have to maintain. So that's why we're trying to really, really get creative with options, diploma choices, those kind of things. To get that to where it's sus- it's sustainable to keep from a budget standpoint.
Then we look at some of our grants, so Title Ones, federal funds. Um, there are a lot of rules uh, tied to this eligibility is based on free and reduced. Um, we currently choose to serve the elementary grade spans, there's particular reasons for that as it relates to how the funds can be used. And some of the difficulty at the middle school or high school level, um, we have to allocate in rank order, so our um. Highest percentage of free and reduced, we have to make sure that they get more per pupil than the next and the next, so we have to have them in ranking order. Um, and we have to allocate to participating private schools, so we have to ask the local private schools. Um, if they would like to participate and we give them their share based on which students they have living in our boundary and what that school is allocated. So if they have a student that lives in Blair, they would get that allocation per student. And we have to oversee their expenditures and and monitor.
Did not know that.
How they're spending the funds to make sure it is uh, based on allowable uses.
And the other thing we do have to do, pro curio wise, that way is transportation, we are required by law to provide end up cost.
Um, and then the other things, um, we have a particular allocation uh, related to homelessness. Um, making sure that we're setting aside a a uh, different allocation for homeless students in non-title buildings. Obviously, this money only goes to title, but they also have an allocation for students uh, that are homeless that live in non-title buildings. Then our at-risk, this is state funded, it's categorical. Um, we get an allocation, we're currently, uh, we currently start off with some district allocations before. Before the funds are distributed by building, um, right now, we are supporting instructional coaches and behavior interventionists based on need. And based on research as it relates to effect size and uh, how we're best going to uh, make some positive changes with student achievement. Um, and then the funds are assigned to the buildings based on their at-risk count, that is different um, than their um, free and reduced. The at-risk counts, there's other factors related, and we have different amounts per grade span. The additional funds um, were given to Traverse City High School to fund a school social worker this year. Uh, because that is allowable under at-risk, and then we have some other grants that uh, we have uh, specifically to some of our sites. And early literacy, and then we've been very fortunate the last few years to get some thirty-one N. Money from uh, Northad, it's actually allocated to the I S D and we apply for it, that's for school mental health. Um, we uh, this money, when you receive it, it requires a twenty percent match. But we have been able to add social workers, behavior interventionists and counselors out of that pot of money, so we're hoping that it stays. Uh, doesn't, I've not heard that that one might be something that will be eliminated, but we work directly with the I S D to apply for that.
But just to give you an idea of the severity of that is cut from the I S D. That is three social workers, that is two behavior specialists and two counselors. If the I S D funds cut from that, it's gone.
Do we have any reason to expect that could happen this year?
Yeah. State budget's going to be low, I mean, it it's not going to have the money that it's had. There are going to be cuts from a state funding level of some sorts and categoricals, so we just don't know, we're gonna hope and we're gonna. When we advocate and when you talk to your school board association people and priorities and those kind of things, this is a big one. The I S D was afraid it was gonna be lost last year, because remember its partner for us, you know, was cut drastically, almost in, you know, in half. And so they, fortunately, that stayed, but you know, it's only year to year and and that's something that they're. That's on their priority list from an I S D standpoint to really try to advocate to keep.
All right, Julie, I'll have you go back to the presentation, please. Um, again, when uh, we're looking at mission-based budget, we're comparing to the goals set by the board. We also look at research as it relates to the most impacted student achievement. If you would click on the link there to the research. We can take a look at this, I don't know if you're, nope, sorry.
While while she's looking for that, I just was looking over my notes, so at at the M A S B Annual Leadership Conference that Beth and I just attended. This last weekend, Jennifer Smith, as always, did a great overview of legislative updates, but did not mention that thirty-one N. He did not, that would have caught our attention.
Yeah, there's so many categoricals right now from the, from all the state money and leftover from COVID, you know, the the S R funds and all that. That, you know, it's a.
It's political pot work.
It it's a lot, so this is why we have to recognize and advocate.
Uh, so this is a link, again, relating to what we talked about for the Compass Strategic Plan and our goals and how we're spending our money. To have the biggest impact on student achievement. We look at research, um, we've actually looked at Hattie's research for quite some time. Um, there's something called the Effect Size related to student achievement, and it is a very long list. Um, of research that was developed to say what impacts student achievement the most, from highest impact to lowest impact. And so a lot of what we're doing as it relates to instructional coaches, behavior support. You'll see these more on the upper part of the scale because it has a bigger impact to student achievement. Versus unfortunately, class size is very low of an impact size.
It's ironic, you know, self-reported grades is way up there at the top, wonder how that works. Self-reported grades.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the top, Julie?
Okay. So, so this is great to know that there is research out there. But have we, have, I know you all must have ongoing conversations with the building staff about what they think. Is the most impactful, but have we ever surveyed people so that maybe they feel like a little more comfortable sharing information confidentially? But what?
We've done a survey, so two years ago, I went to every staff meeting and had that conversation with a couple of key things. Uh, behavior, you know, in class size, and the answer, of course, was we really both, you know, but in the end, like. Behavior, at least at that time, you know, and I know it's still out there. I mean, that is one that across the country, if you've read articles in schools and colleagues, maybe at school board association, those things. It has become a more of a challenge, you know, every day. And and doing what we can with having more people, you know, that was original goal for instructional coaches to also have some behavior support. Um, with that, um, we have put behavior interventionist in, um, could do more, you know, from that standpoint. Um, and so, you know, that mix with, the boards have the goal of student achievement. And so when we talk about, you know, working, if you look at the things up there, it's a lot of teacher reflection, pedagogical. And having people that directly work with teachers on that has been the support that we put into place. This is only, I think, our second full year of instructional coaches. Second or third? This is year three from that standpoint. Implementation science will tell you three to five years. To be able to see an impact from that standpoint of intervention you put in place.
And then after that, diminishing returns?
Uh, not necessarily.
No.
You know, but again, you you look at what it is from that standpoint.
Yeah, that's something I'd really uh, like to follow more closely.
But Hattie's work really is, you know, the the blueprint, I mean, the meta-analysis between Bob Marzano's work. You may be here, has talked about our evaluation model, Marzano Evaluation Model, so, you know, comes from the McCrell Labs of years and years and years of study. John Hattie has probably the biggest bulk of of work of thousands of meta-analysis that's been put together. Um, and, you know, that's, that's the list of um, updated in twenty eighteen, he has had a couple latest ones. Jesse and I were just talking the other day about some of the A I that they're starting to put in and to do some research and mixing things, but. Um, you know, he, his work is really considered the the gospel, if you will, out there of of based on true solid. You know, scientific peer-reviewed research that shows what that effect size of of the most impact you can have as student achievement.
Yeah, and is the, we talked a couple study sessions ago about the instructional rounds, is that on here?
Again, and that's what it's looking, so you see, you'll see some of the reflection, some of those things, since a teacher has the opportunity to be able to have peer review. Have other staff come in, give them feedback, non-evaluative is important, you know, in that mix. And so that's what, in that upper level of those numbers, when you see some of those skills and a lot of times, it's teachers to have other teachers come in and even say. Here's something to reflect on, here's something that I've seen, here's something as we look at professional development opportunities, here's something to try and impact as we look at. You know, um, scaffolding, or if it's um, looking at trying to have grouping strategies or. Those top tiers of what we can try and do, you'll see explicit instruction is in there in that list. Um, that's something that we geared a lot towards um, in that element, but uh. But yeah, that's something that, you know, I think we're, we'd be happy to, you know, put some more effort out there with that. Um, but, you know, that's what kind of a lot guides we do have, we added for the first time last year a professional. Learning committee that we have add of staff and members of the T C A and others to talk about. What is it that we need the best professional development for to make those kind of um, jumps, so. And instructional, instructional rounds is one thing right now that, and you might remember, when I first came, it was one of the things that staff felt. Was really a strong program that was dropped with budget cuts and other things, that we put a lot of work in to try and, our team isn't putting. Place back, uh, really at that request.
Well, I appreciate you guys listening to the staff on an ongoing basis about what they think is most needed, what's most effective. Where the money keep, needs to keep going and conversely, if they find something's less effective, to.
Conversation every year, you know, with it.
How far down is class size?
Uh, it's it's pretty low. I think it was in the point threes maybe.
And really, you want, you want something above point four, an average, an average student, Hattie says, should, their learning for one year should be point four. So really, we're looking at what are we putting in place that goes above and beyond point four, that's why at the top, you see that hinge point there. Um, so we're really looking for how do we maximize those.
And if you wanna scroll up, Julie, it does show negative impact. Negative, negative impact, uh, students feeling disliked, um, lack of sleep. Family on welfare or state aid, parental military deployment, so there are things that have negative impact on students as well. That we also pay attention to.
So here's a book that I'll make sure that the board gets a copy of called Visible Learning. That really gives, you know, the entire thoughts on, so you can see each one of these and what he talks about. And and uh, what it, you know, does and why that effect size is larger and such.
Thank you.
Good stuff. All right, so still talking about our mission-based project process, um, we really start after, um, we have information on. Whether any formulas are gonna change or how we're gonna allocate funds, then we really start looking at enrollment projections, this is something that we start looking at early on. Um, it's something that we work very, very closely with uh, human resources and the principals about uh, what they know, what they're hearing. Um, we have budget projections, uh, just recently, a year or two ago, we got another update from Middle Cities, they're an outside source. That will do a study of their predictions of our enrollment, uh, very heavily based on trends and birth rates. Um, we have tracked for quite some time birth rates and what percentage of Grand Char- Grand Travis County birth rates we actually receive in kindergarten. Which is ranging usually around seventy-seven percent. Um, so we take a look at that as the progression per grade moves along and what we're seeing in the schools. Um, there's also just a general um, prediction or a look at just rolling grades up. And whether students are staying or leaving, what we're hearing from them, and then also when students are moving up to a different grade, specifically moving schools. So fifth graders moving to the sixth, um, if they live in the east boundary, are they going to go to East Middle School, are they gonna open enroll in West Middle School? And at that time, uh, at the middle school, they're also very heavily looking at students that are starting to explore the building from outside uh, schools. To come back to T caps at that uh, middle school level. Um, so we look at all of those factors, we have a lot of spreadsheets that advance grades and we do some predictions and percentages. And then just really talking to the principals, because they have the most knowledge as to what's going on day to day and what they're hearing and seeing. As far as any kind of building tours, um, and just closer relationships with students on what they're doing the following year. Um, then we just start putting those formulas, once we come to a determination with the principal on where we think they're gonna land, the safest, most conservative approach. Um, we actually start putting those formulas into uh, spreadsheets and numbers so that we can actually give each principal. Uh, booklet of their information for their allocations, general fund and grants. Um, so that they can start meeting with their school building teams to decide uh, how they're going to um, change or prioritize some of their allocations. Some buildings have a little bit more flexibility than others, depending on how the funding is coming across and whether it has restrictions. Um, obviously, close connection to the curriculum instruction team as it relates to their building needs. Um, and what they're finding based uh, on their goals and um, actually analysis of all of their. Uh, information and data from the previous year, um, so that's, that's pretty heavy conversation. And then really, we're just working on placement of staff, so we're looking at uh, how many staff is needed, how many retirements we have. Where do we end with each individual building on a surplus of staff or a vacancy of staff? Um, then we have a conversation overall at the elementary level, we have this many surplus, and we start talking to staff about anybody. Have any requests to change schools be- before we have to make a decision to place somebody to a different school that didn't make a request. We're fortunate every year to get some requests, so a lot of times, it's a um, uh, pretty decent process. Where uh, we don't have anybody going anywhere they really don't wanna go. Um, so that, that is a careful dance that H R works directly with the building principal on to make sure that we have people. Moving to another building that they actually would like to move to, so it's a positive experience, um, not to say that happens every time. Um, we really truly try to let uh, teachers know before they leave in June what their anticipated um, assignment is for the next year. It's not always one hundred percent possible, especially as it relates to some of our specials, um, and partial teachers that aren't fully uh, one point O. Uh, but we try our best to make that a assumption as to the assignment and actually give them the assignment. And then we just continue to monitor enrollments all the way till August as we're developing class, class lists and. Um, determining which teachers are teaching what grades and what sections and how many kids they have. Um, again, just looking at the strategic plan, this is constantly uh, what we review as it relates to how we're spending our funds. Making su- sure that we're maximizing um, all of our efforts uh, as it relates to student success and student achievement. Student's success overall though is very important as it relates to all the other issues uh, that are noted on here, mental health, emotional health, supports, behavior. Um, making sure students uh, are connected to buildings and such, we have a lot of programs uh, that are available at each individual building. For positive behavior interventions and so on.
Dr. Van Wagoner, I was just curious about the student behavior, because we all have heard about that being an epidemic portion, you know, levels during. And po- immediately post-COVID, is it starting to come down in our district or nationally from what y'all are reading and hearing?
Um, I will tell you that I think that our staff is doing an outstanding job with it. And so maybe in the classroom, I think teachers are doing a great job to where maybe it's, you know, finding strategies to not. Where it escalates so high that it goes to the office for a referral. So I think if you look at the data that we've, we've shown the, to the board, we've had some behavior referrals go down. But I personally would attribute that to the staff that's working really, really hard to try and work and and with kids and those strategies. To do so, but the actual incidents and what kids are coming to school with, I don't think has dropped. And again, I think that would be a great, another question to kind of ask our staff and then.
We're getting amongst shaking heads.
From uh, but you know, from feedback that I've, I've seen in that element, I think, you know, I think that's the reality. I think that as you have social ills that are homelessness, remember, that is increased in. As you have social ills that are homelessness, remember that is increased in our community. I think, you know, um struggles, you know, with uh finances, those things often. Are things that are trauma affected kids when they walk in our doors. And you know, if I just look at, as I told the board my update here, that our SSN needs are continuing to grow. And so that tells me that, you know, with the trauma that's impacted by those things, you see a lot of behavior from that standpoint, so. The long answer is, you know, no, but our people are doing a great job to not necessarily send those to the principal. Maybe as much as they have in the past because they've worked hard in trying to find strategies to work with kids to, to mitigate that.
And I think increasing staff, I mean, the, the coaches, social workers, adding counselors. Um, I think helps manage some of that behavior. So if you take any bodies out of those schools. And you get further away from, I think that board's goal of, of student achievement because those people that were focused on achievement. Now have to maintain safety and now have to address.
Yep, gotta have that baseline of safety. Thank you.
All right, now we get into some just detailed information. Um, all of this information is in the annual report. Um, we tried to in this presentation just link it up with page numbers. Obviously, year by year, the page numbers change. But if you're looking at fiscal year N twenty three, again, that's the last um. Last booklet that we have produced, you'll get the new one in a couple of weeks in November. Um, but uh this information is in uh the annual report that we produce every year, so you can look at that. We did add headcount as a request just for this particular slide. So um what does that mean? Well, in twenty three, twenty four, uh we had ten thousand one hundred physical students. Uh participating in some way, shape and form in TCAPs or shared time, but we were only funded for eighty eight fifty seven. Again, we have a lot of students that are not full time, especially when we have shared time uh programs. I know Sandy, you said we got funded uh for two hundred shared time students, but how many actual students did that represent?
One thousand four hundred and twenty nine.
Because it's just a portion of a day.
It's specials mostly, so. So that's why the numbers are so drastically different, but you can see, you know, the membership over time and it has declined, which. Is not really unexpected. I think we're pretty close to leveling off at this point. Um, again, Middle Cities, uh the last two years, they, their prediction was way lower than what we saw, so we're. Trying to be careful with our predictions moving forward, so we're not, not throwing out a two hundred student loss, knowing it might only be fifty.
So we're actually beating predictions of professional work that looks at those enrollments compared to what they think it is and. You know, one of the things that's tough, I mean, our neighbors of all of our public schools are facing the same thing. I mean. Elk Rapids has dropped out of formula now because they have so, they've lost so many students. Almost all of Leland, if not soon, all of Leland County will be out of formula from students that dropped from that standpoint. So there's just, we have much lower birth rates and so there's less kids and there is more competition and, and so. So you know, it's uh, so we were, you know, we were darn close right now. We think where we're at within five or six kids of what we, our prediction was, where we thought. Um, of what our enrollment would be, so we're pretty darn gauged, pretty, pretty on, you know, from that standpoint. The one thing that we do could see. We think there is a, a population of um at risk virtual students that are in virtual programs and outside, around the state. That we are hoping to bring back in the TCAPs as we, we build this program. Cause we know there are probably two hundred to three hundred FTE out there of students that are virtual that live within the boundaries of Traverse City area public schools. And it's not until this year that we've really started something that can be a robust virtual program uh from that standpoint. So we're hopeful to build it right, take our time and uh, and see if we can capture that and reverse that trend and. And that option that's out there.
And like, there's a couple of school districts around us, right? You have virtual programs.
Correct, and so.
They're going out, they're out of.
Well, we're hearing different things possibly, but you know, so.
I thought there's a couple, like, there's definitely a couple that are out of formula, I mean.
And we're, we're talking, SOS Learning Lab is one that's here that we're trying, I think we're gonna form a partnership with, as we've had some really, really strong conversations. Um, you know, that, that, that have provided instruction from Avondale Schools in Oakland County. Um, over two hundred kids that are, are TCAPs boundary kids. Um, so, you know, we've made some inroads with conversations and partnerships and relationships that we're hoping next year, we're really hoping. The fruits of the labor of what that we're putting in now with that and our building of ours in the, in the um Compass Center and the Maverick Center at, at TCI. Further develops that.
Does TCAPs do, do outreach to students who have left, you know, af, I know we have like exit surveys when families leave TCAPs, but. After they leave, do we follow up a year or two down the road and try to market TCAPs?
I mean, we definitely do. We try really hard to get our kids back to us, especially if they haven't left this region. Something that I know the high schools both keep a list of students, like where they go, what they transfer out of. And in some of it has been, I, I would, I echo what, what Dr. Van Wagner said, uh we saw was. Of a desire for an online program and although we tried really hard after COVID to try to put it together, it just didn't meet the needs of some of our families. And our learners, so I think we're, we're taking our time this year and really seeing, can we, can we provide this to the families that will meet their needs or some of the families just. They really don't want to come back to a large building in TCAPs, but they are interested in coming to a smaller offshoot potentially.
I noticed that the biggest jump, there's like eleven hundred kids in two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty. And I'm assuming that's because of COVID, but you know, where do all those kids go?
Great question. Statewide, they're not sure. You know, um, the interesting thing is, is that many of those kids, we've seen CA sixties and stuff that were never requested. And, and you know, and, and in our state, you don't have a homeschool registry or if they just, if they're not even in a school program. You know, we know statewide, there were well over, I want to say, you know, tens of thousands. You know, from that standpoint, so that's a question, you know, I know that like at TC High, talking to Jen this year. Like they, they try and follow up and find every kid that maybe wasn't enrolled and try and uh see where they're at and get them back, but some, no phone number when they call. You know, that element, so that's, that's been somewhat tough since COVID to track some of those kids that were in school down. They're just, did they move out of state? Did they, you know, we know as a state, we've seen population decreases. You know, all over the state that have, have left and, you know, I think we're one of the few areas that abut that trend, but the reality is, is that. Our population increases have come from seniors, sixty over. If you look at the census data, you know. Uh, I want to save like twenty three thousand, like, like twenty thousand of the people were over sixty. You know, so, so that and our housing issues, you know, as we know, it's just, again, and Middle Cities puts that on their formula, look at that. And that, that's what they've come up with and we felt fortunate to beat the trends they came up with in that element, so, but not gonna stop us. Yeah, we're, we're up there. Leland, so I think is like, might maybe number one, you know, from that standpoint, Leland County. Is up there as well, yeah.
It's up there, pretty high.
Lots of challenges, but also trying to look at different opportunities.
My last question, just on formula, how, how close are we to formula, being, we're well within formula? Like our percentage?
Oh, yes. So you're saying, are you relating it back to?
Yeah, I'm jumping back to my other thing of like where, like how, this is where it all started, so, yeah.
Are you saying what port, like to get to out of formula kind of conversation? So uh we're currently sixty forty, so sixty percent is non homestead of our funding of the ninety six oh eight.
And basically our neighbors are a hundred percent.
But we, I have a slide that shows you the change. It's drastically changed. It used to be completely opposite. It used to be forty percent on homestead and sixty percent state and now it's opposite.
And I'll wait for that.
So it's changing.
Thanks.
Well, and it's interesting too to, to uh kids that want to open and roll the like Glen Lake School, they close.
They get nothing extra for it.
Yeah, well, they closed. They weren't, weren't accepting any other kids from outside of, if you did not live within Glen.
They changed it. Now they're back the other way. And they mostly do it to be able to have their sports teams. And so you will see, you know, you will see students that live on the boundaries of that element. And again, then when you get sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars a student. And you can, you know, do some things that we can't, you know, in a reality. And so that's tough to compete with. And again, they are fully tax, you know, their taxpayers fully fund that and they don't rely on a foundation. So if they get two new kids or twenty less kids, doesn't matter. And so they only do it so that they have more kids to be able to fill out their slots for sports teams. That's no advantage otherwise to them, but it is a detriment to us.
So speaking of foundational allowance, here's the split. Um, so you can see back in eighteen nineteen, it was thirty five hundred non homestead and forty three, we were pretty close to fifty fifty. Now, um as of twenty three, twenty four, it's definitely sixty forty, pretty close to sixty forty. So more is coming from non homestead than the state.
And that's commercial properties too, paying that operational mileage.
Yeah, it's non homestead, so exempted properties. There's some words that the attorneys always ask me to say that I don't have at this point, so I'm not gonna say commercial property only. Usually business. It's on the ballot.
So that's, and that's, so that percentage increases because of the, the mill just stayed the same, the property values have gone up. I think Scott, I don't know if this is where you were going with it, like, is there gonna be a point where our property values are, are high enough?
We're always, but.
But it's a big drop, I mean.
I mean theoretically. Ten years theoretically, if it stayed at the same rate, yeah.
But then you also have a lot of not for profits here too, and so they wouldn't be taxed, correct? Not for profits, like child and.
I think their property is.
Churches are.
No, churches wasn't for sure, yeah.
Oh, sometimes it depends.
We have a Realtor here who can make a projection for us.
Again, whole prices for new families.
So then we move into teacher, student teacher ratio, which was um asked of us. This is something that we produce uh for you, however. It doesn't mean anything. So when you look at um the bulletin ten fourteen, which really they gather their data from the FIDS that we submit. So they're comparing information from all the schools. They say right in there that it really has no meaning. Um, it's just basically taking all of your teachers and all of your students and dividing, so it has really no bearing on what you see sitting in classrooms. I will point out that in fiscal twenty one, twenty two and twenty three, you can see it dropped. We intentionally spent three million dollars of effort to focus on class size.
You remember a lot of that we did late where we added sections, we removed splits, you know, and that was. The way that, so that ratio, you can see, even with all that that we spent, the average went down by one student. In the average, but we, we strategically did that, again, to eliminate some of those situations. You know, over just some of that is how we did that, but overall, in the scheme of things as far as average.
Well, it does seem like, you know, there's a lag in public perception on this, right? So if Hattie, you know, Hattie's findings, his metadata analysis is.
I mean, it's not that it doesn't have an effect, like, you know, and, and there is an element where, you know, what is too high. I mean, you, you do balance that. I mean, I think it's still a consideration with workload and some of those things. So I, I wouldn't say that it's not an important thing. I'm just saying that, you know, in the overall scope, you've got to look at that with the others, when the board sits and makes that decision. You know, um, again, you have teacher burnout, you have a lot different there to really sit and look at with it. But if you're just purely looking at an effect size, just purely student achievement, that's what that gives you, but there's a lot of other factors again. How much behavior you're dealing with, I mean, you know, it, it's a lot to manage with a class full, you know, of kids and, and so I wouldn't want to discount that. Either from that standpoint, but you know, when you have resources and you try and spread them out, you kind of sit and say where. How do we do this and look at priorities and, and what can we maybe do a little here and a little bit more here, you know, in that aspect and. So I think it's important to look at the whole picture.
And I, I just stress again to listen to our teachers, um, you know, I think we got, I got feedback as a board member. Um, that was valuable and making those decisions and, and what certain teachers wanted or, or didn't want and so. I think as a board member, it makes you feel confident that you're making those right decisions to the parents that you get letters from or those kind of things and. To try to understand that, so.
There is, you just have to realize, you know, like, it does come at a cost though of what you might do here, you know, and that's okay. Like, that's what your, seven of you are here for to weigh all those things and when we put this whole thing together to, on, based on your strategic plan and your values. Of what you think those dollars should go to and then we operationalize that as you give us that feedback and, and approval of the budget.
Well, and I think just all of this is so valuable. Um, I think any um board member coming in should replay this meeting. Cause I mean, six years of serving and it took me a while to understand this, so uh it's very complicated, so. This is, this is great, so. So then we move into um some other expenses, so um. This is information that's not in an annual book or the budget book, but it is something that was requested. Um, so just looking at the total dollars spent on salaries versus benefits, purchased services, supplies and other expenses. Um, you can see by year uh the changes. Uh, when you look at the bottom, so twenty two, twenty three, again, that was the last annual report that was produced. Fifty seven uh point five million in salaries alone, which make up forty six point seven one of our total expenses. Total expenses were one twenty three, two thirty six, nine seventeen. That's salaries only. So when we talk about eighty seven percent of our budget, it's salaries and benefits. So I have a little bit more information. Um, this was asked. Uh, we don't normally produce this, not something, um, oh, it is in our annual report. It doesn't look just exactly like this, but we did manipulate it a little bit based on the question. So really just looking at the total expense uh for basic programs, uh K five, six, eight and nine, twelve and what percent of our total budget that is.
Christine, I just wanted to point out one thing. If you go back to that salary benefits, big old spreadsheet, yeah. I mean, I just calculated the projection, the percentages and salaries have gone up twenty two percent in nine years. Benefits though have gone up eighty two percent and you've got another slide that details that, but that was a really big find.
You'll see, especially related to our retirement rate, you'll see, it used to be sixty, sixteen percent. It's at twenty five, we're gonna get a little bit of relief, but the majority of those increases were totally related to the retirement rate.
So that's what we talk about often charter schools and others, they do not have those legacy costs. That we do in that element that has been huge.
Yeah, and I was thinking healthcare.
And healthcare. It is huge.
So I did want to point out, there were a couple of questions asked that are really, really complex to provide an answer, so. Specifically speaking, there was a question about purchase services and what that looks like. I um, we have a lot of account codes, I think fifteen thousand overall. As it relates to purchase services, how many account codes do we have?
Uh, the general fund has about sixteen hundred.
So we'd have to go through all sixteen hundred accounts to really delve down to what each building or department is spending their purchase services on. This is all the way from lawn mowing to snow plowing to some transportation services to uh bringing in a speaker. It, it's this very huge amount of account codes that's related just specifically to purchase services, so it'd be really hard. Um, if you had one particular item in mind like snow plowing, I could pull just that information and give you a total, but it would be hard.
These are just contractual services, it sounds like, yeah.
Yeah, purchase services. It's, it's, it's a lot related to more than just uh contracted services, if you will. It's professional development in some way, shape or form too. Um, on this slide, when we talk about basic salaries, so I was asked a question, um, in general, overall, what, what percentage increase did our. Employees receive and that one's really complex. So Julie, if you'll click on the TCE salary, EA salary schedule. This is something I want to show you so you understand. It's not, not one employee gets the same, they get the same overall percentage on wages. Um, but there's so many other things related to each specific union. Uh, there's longevity, um, there's steps. Steps alone throughout the district costs about eight hundred thousand a year on top of the percentage increase, so this is just showing you an example. Depending on how over time the steps have been developed. Um, if you have uh somebody on step five that are bachelors from one year to the next, it's a five point three percent increase. Um, our largest jump is step thirteen to fourteen, that's an eleven percent increase. How are these steps uh deter- How are these steps determined? It's longstanding history and the changes we make over time. Um, we've worked pretty closely with the union to determine priorities. Um, at one point, um, uh, really, we had requested an administrative side to try to bump up the lower end of the scale. And recently, they wanted us to focus on the top end, so we did do that. But really, we look at, um, individual priorities and how much money we might have available to determine what that looks like. I'm not sure when this was originally created, that there was ever a bump this step up, this many percent. I, I'm not sure where the numbers came from, but over time, this is where they're at. So it, it wouldn't be fair to say that what, you know, employees overall got this percentage, because it's different for all employees based on their salary schedule, longevity.
Education.
Education.
Education. So that's why it's too complex to really give that answer. And that's just one, one union booklet, we have several others that are just drastically different on how they prioritize funds or how we ask them to prioritize funds. Okay, we'll go back to the presentation. Um, again, just looking at benefits, so, um, we kind of broke it down for all of the benefits that we have, so you know what makes up that forty percent, forty-one percent, forty-one oh seven. So total, uh, for employee insurance, and then, uh, we have other things, mandatory coverages and other benefits available. For a total benefit cost, a little over fifty million, and then we dig in even deeper and explain what the mandatory benefits are. Uh, retirement, you can tell in two thousand fourteen, the percentage was sixteen oh five, in twenty twenty-three, it was twenty-five to six-seven. So drastic increases alone in the retirement rate. Uh, we will see some relief, um, this fiscal year, um, so that's exciting, um, because that has been a challenge. Obviously, the higher that goes, the lower we have for everything else.
But just realize in the budget, that replaced a foundation, Joe, right?
Right.
So the five-point-seven-five was a swap for that and half of the, of the school health and mental, you know, the school, uh, safety and mental health money. So overall, when it was all said and done, we ended up just about where our very conservative, that we hope we wouldn't get budget landed.
Um, again, just looking at, uh, purchase services, breaking it down between the services, supplies, and other expenses. A lot of things, uh, related to each of those, account codes, uh, per building, per department. Uh, maintenance and operations, so just sharing, uh, total expenses. Um, obviously, overall, it, the percentage wise, it hasn't changed too much. Um, dollar wise, it always changes, but, uh, as it relates to the last couple of years, uh, we did have a slight benefit in twenty-two that we really stocked up with some COVID cleaning supplies back in twenty, so we were able to kind of use those for a few years, so we had a little bit lower expenses in that year.
So with train coming in, that'll help some with the maintenance cost some.
Yeah, mostly in the utility expenses.
But hopefully a little bit too in the, in the trade a little bit.
See that.
Yeah, the difficulty is in the trades, obviously, as it relates to parts and time and outside services to work on things, uh, it will help in that arena. Um, on the other side, obviously, we have certain number of staff that, um, will actually be able to do more preventative maintenance when they're not spending time on these things, so that staff cost isn't going to change, but the productivity and the, um, opportunity, um, to have future cost avoidance is definitely there.
So another one of those three to five years to see a variance.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of repairs, hopefully go away through that. I mean, I know we do, we don't do all of those in-house, right?
What's that? Not all of them. We have trades, but we also have to outsourced for some specialty, bigger installation things. Um, it's like we were talking, like we were talking about our boilers, we had some pneumatic controls, none of our staff know how to work on this. We had to find a retiree and we contracted with him to work on it, because he still had his tools from retirement. You know, our building just now starting to get some steam build up, we had two parts go bad that they couldn't get locally, so we had to wait for those parts to come in and hopefully runs all winter, so that we make it until train shows up.
Right, but with so much new stuff, we'll also have warranties, right?
Come on.
Hey, wait a minute, how did you get that?
Um, curriculum budget summary, so, um, after the, uh, actually, back in, I think, two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we started to infuse quite a bit more money in curriculum instruction. Um, you can see, obviously, when we got some Essar money, there was a big influx, starting in fiscal twenty-two. Um, but this year, the current budget for curriculum instruction at the district level, this is not by all means our total budget for curriculum, um, is about one point three million, and that's all sources, so, um, Title II, Essar, curriculum, and then we have a textbook budget too.
Yeah, what was the, what's the distinction between curriculum and, and textbook? Is it hard, textbook hardcover and curriculum online?
Yeah, um, one of the things that we had initially set it as was we, um, most, most departments don't get to carry over funds because of the textbook situation and sometimes ordering and needing it later. Um, we actually let them carry over those funds, so that's why it's segregated out.
So is this, I'm just curious, in an ideal world, um, for a district of our size and all of the, you know, great offerings we have in our, our curriculum, it, do you think like a one million dollar, I mean, I don't know what this averages out to, eyeballing it, maybe one point five? And that was obviously with some, you know, Essar funds, but like, is this a reasonable budget for a district of our size and complexity, or do you think?
I think it's on the low end.
Is it? Okay.
But, but it's drastically better if you were to take that out even a little bit further, right?
Oh, yeah.
There weren't zeros.
It was like four hundred thousand, I think.
We had a ton of catch-up, you know, Essar did us a big favor, that, you know, we, and, and we had books, and, and even still a few, we've got, you know, we didn't have, you may remember, we didn't have a PE health curriculum at all, ever. You know, it wasn't until a year ago that we finally bought, you know, something ahead of that. So that's been a big challenge, I can tell, when I, I know I came on and Eric was on the board, there was not much, you know, planning, I mean, we've, we have invested a ton into textbooks and digital books with that across the board. But honestly, you know, with our challenges of so spread out and stretching every dollar, it, it could be more.
It does seem like you have a good system, though, where you're staggering, you know, sequencing purchases, right?
We're trying, you know, to get on a cycle and have that, but you know, like, Jessie and I talked a little about, she's really wanted to take a little bit of an approach. Look, you want to talk just a little bit about what we talked about with each of the subject areas?
Yeah, the curriculum leaders and I were talking about building a three-year cycle where we're reviewing intentionally courses on a cycle, right? And so I've actually, our, our secondary leaders are going to review one middle school course and each of the four core and one high school course this year. So, um, they're going to look at, they're going to look at everything from materials to the professional development and support that our teachers receive, both like internally and do we send people to national and state conferences? Um, and they're also going to look at, like, what does our data say about the learning in that, in that course for kids? Like, how are they doing and, and what are we valuing and how are we adjusting? Um, so I, I kind of challenged them, I said, do you think you can take all of your courses at secondary and put them in three years? And they kind of looked at me and they were like, uh, I don't know. So we're going to try one middle school and one high school course this year to really do a full audit of it, and we're bringing in the teachers who teach those courses to help us go through and go, how aligned are our assessments? Do we have the materials that we need? Are we giving the professional development learning that we need? Are our kids responding? Um, I told John, like, my big goal is then for, like, maybe your US history, it's ninth grade requirement, teacher knows, okay, next year, our course will get that audit, right? So they always know sort of where they land in the cycle. And Dan and I have talked a little bit about how could we put sort of the four, the four core and, um, our, our elective areas on a cycle too? So maybe we were looking at English this year, English, world language, and HPE, and next year, we're digging in and looking at math and STEM, and, you know, so we kind of have a bigger cycle for the curricular areas, but then within that, we're looking at all of our courses and all of our grade levels. We're working on it, I, I think it's doable, and I think that way our teachers would know this is going to get dug into in a year or two, and I'll have an opportunity to sit at the table and look at our resources.
I will say, over the years, um, because we've, we've been so closely aligned with the budget, the biggest challenge hasn't been the dollars available, it's the people to do the work to make sure what we need is what we need, when we need it. Um, we haven't been fortunate to have dedicated elementary and secondary oversight, they, they have a little bit more opportunity now to really dig, dig deep into some of these things. We've, we've had carryover in curriculum for years, because they just didn't have enough time or expertise to evaluate what they needed to evaluate, do some kind of pilot and make recommendations. We used to have at, um, the administration at Boardman, we used to have two full conference rooms full of student, uh, of, um, support specialists per content area. They were cut several years ago and not brought back, so it, it really takes staff time to evaluate what the needs are, look at the data, research opportunities, pilot those opportunities, that takes time and people.
Yeah, it's not just a program, right? It's more than that, it, it is what is the program, what's our scope and sequence, what are our assessments? How are we scoring and valuing things? What does our instructional method look like? What does our data say about our kids? What new professional learning is out there? Are we engaging in it, right? And, and I'll tell you too, that, that does also kind of tie to that piece of retaining and taking care of our teachers. They want to be professionals, and when you say, hey, you know, would, do you want to go to this conference, or hey, can you present to your colleagues on this topic, because you're really hitting it out of the park, they love that, they love to be valued and, and treat it like a professional that way. So there's, it's, it's not just buying a series of textbooks, it's a lot deeper than that.
Yeah, sounds like a great strategy, so thank you.
We'll see, we'll see.
Thank you, to you too.
Because you were looking at elementary math and made some changes last year, and then ELA.
Yeah, for elementary, it's our CKLA adoption this year. And that process and be able to have early adopters that are currently teaching it, right now, they're actually doing observations in the district for the next three days, you know, Brittany Kay was a, that we just added for our, uh, curriculum director, is going around with the CKLA specialist and our, uh, ELA specialist to, to classrooms currently in the district that are, are piloting it, so we can kind of work through instead of, what I've seen in the past, sometimes is we adopt a curriculum, uh, we put all the books on the teacher's desk and say, you know, have at it, and then.
It doesn't work.
It does not work. So trying to get in front of it, and this is, you know, as far as getting in front of it, it's two to three years. So we start to look down that path of math being next, how can we get in front of it two to three years ahead of time? So, I mean, my goal is to have those supplies in teachers' hands this spring, so that we have some professional development lined up in the fall, and it's not August, we're just opening boxes and kind of wasting time, we're actually learning a little bit about how to teach it.
Yeah, and, and I would say too, Christine's not joking, the state budget is like super complex, and as I learn about the categorical funding and where it comes in, I agree, I don't think it's the amount of money that's limiting, it, it really is being strategic about knowing, you know, this pot is for professional learning, cool, how are we prioritizing which pieces of professional learning work with our staff right now? This pot is for people who can come in and coach or support behaviors. Okay, where do we need to use and maximize those funds for, but like, man, it is like, it's like, it's very complicated.
It's a jigsaw puzzle.
Yes, it's very complicated.
It's like three D chess.
I was just going to say.
But you don't get some of the pieces until April.
That might be one of the weirdest pieces, the whole thing.
It is.
Where are we, uh, with the social studies curriculum?
So we adopted our Scholastic News this year, as far as moving that into the, the elementary schools and, and then making some connections with, uh, with ELA as far as making that a little more robust, there's in a set book that we have for social studies curriculum, that, that social studies, you know, that we have the science kits with the national standards, but social studies, we do the best we can to connect to, to our language arts, and CKLA is one of the, the pieces of that adoption, and they have some of those natural connections also, so we can maximize that time. With that, with our C-CKLA curriculum coming in, for ELA, they, they estimate that's about a hundred twenty minutes a day to properly implement that curriculum, so once you take that gap up and then you move into math, science, you know, we talk about our SEL curriculum, that time becomes pretty finite, so being able to make those cross-curricular connections, uh, helps, helps us be a lot more efficient with our teaching.
It's nice to see where one can complement the other, so you build.
Otherwise, it's impossible, you just run out of time.
Then, then we have the overall actual expenses for Essar, so we had the budget, uh, approved by the board quite some time ago. It really, um, the actual, it's not much different than what we had asked for in the budget. Um, we had some, uh, investments in curriculum instruction, you saw those three million, uh, one per year, fund balance the same. We're fortunate this year to have the three million we put in, um, so we didn't have to make any drastic structural changes until we knew what our budget was. Um, one time, uh, FTE to lower class size, uh, that was over a period of three years. Um, a lot of other things related to, um, some pay, um, as it relates to some of our hourly staff, uh, virtual tuition. Uh, and then we get into grants, so.
What is that, virtual tuition? It's not real, you just watch it on television?
Yeah, um, so it's our online classes, so students that take online, um, we actually pay the tuition and purchase the books, um, because they're our student.
And we had quite a bit more of that early in the summer.
Yeah. Lincoln, Lincoln.
Lincoln Learning, yeah, and Michigan Virtual, and Edgenuity, we did at that time, yeah.
I, I have a question, kind of, and I don't know if it ties close to this, but speaking of virtual, when you have the virtual, the kid does a fair amount on their own.
Depending, so that's one thing, we've changed a little bit, that with our Compass Learning Center, we have staff available for the kids to go into the center and get help specifically with those courses.
But that's not scheduled student to staff at the time.
Correct.
Correct, so the student. The student, correct, identifies when it's time to request that need.
Correct, but the teacher also keeps an eye on where they're at, if they're making progress, and if not, to get ahold of them, have conversations. There has to be quite a bit of two-way monitoring that's done per the state requirements, especially in the early, early periods of the, of the year.
Does the kid then, in effect, the student becomes more an active learner?
Oh, that's your hope? You know, with success, with success, yes.
Where they can be more passionate.
With, with success, yes, but without success, not so much.
But, yeah, and it's kind of cool.
Virtual learning's not for every kid, I think, you know, you really do have to have some self-motivation in that, but that's one thing we're trying to do, is make sure, the past, we haven't had the resources for the wraparound services of those teachers. We were fortunate enough this year to have some grant dollars to build that, and we're hopeful that to self-sustain it with increased enrollment in that program. But that's a real key, the ones you've seen success is they have teachers and mentors around them to really hold their hand when needed to help them maneuver and, once in a while, give them a little nudge, you know, and, and help them out when they, they get stuck.
So grant funding, um, this is in the budget book, uh, that's presented every June. Um, if you want to click on the twenty twenty-four, Julie, for me, uh, this is what it looks like. Um, we just, uh, indicate all of our grants, federal, state, and local, um, what they are and what the allocation is for that particular fiscal year. Um, you will notice in some scenarios, there's carryover, um, so when we don't spend all the funds from the previous allocation, um, it's actually a new, um, code, if you will, to have it as carryover, but it's added to this year's allocation. And that happens a lot, particularly in grants that have different years than our fiscal year for closeout, that happens a lot, um, especially over the summer. Right. Um, the statistical section, uh, if you would click on financial trends for twenty twenty-three, this is a pretty lengthy, uh, section that has kind of an introduction and overview about what we're looking at, financial trends, revenue, debt capacity. Um, and then it really starts looking at some numbers, so this is helpful, um, just to look at overall information gathered by the data, by the numbers over time, and what that looks like, and then you can specifically look at the numbers by category to see over time, the past ten years, how that has changed, um, and begin to have conversation as to why and what the impacts were. So that's a good section. Uh, fund balance, um, if you'd click on page seventy, page seventy has a lot of good information, not just for fund balance, but some of the other questions that were specifically asked for this overview. So this really, um, this is our, uh, comparison schedule for general fund, this was for fiscal year twenty-three. You can look at our total revenues, um, original budget, final budget, and actual, so you can see our variance from the original to the actual. Again, original budget is really always our best estimate based on information we have at the time. Um, and then the final budget is the, um, amendment that we're bringing to you, and then actual is where we land. There's always differences, uh, we typically average about a one-point-five million dollar variance, it's been a little bit higher lately, but it changes so drastically, as, as I've said before, we don't get some of our grant allocations till mid-year, so, you know, we, we're not basing this on, we had the information, we just entered it wrong, we really get information, new information, um, all the time. Um, expenditures, you can look at some. Um expenditures, you can look at some uh specific categories as it relates to basic instruction, um added needs. Uh, those were would be some some of our at-risk funding and more um interventions. Support services, uh pupil services, instructional staff, uh general admin- administration. Um, again, the um information is located here, but it's also reviewed at the beginning of our annual report because it talks about rankings. Um, so you can look at uh specifically any one of these services and see where we rank in the state. Again, they use this information based on the FID that we submitted, so you can look at um uh in twenty twenty three, uh we were nineteenth largest out of eight hundred and twenty-two schools and we ranked six oh one in total uh general fund revenue per student. There's a lot of other numbers for rankings, um it talks about basic instruction, three hundred and twenty-six in the state for basic instruction, seven hundred and eighty-one for general administration, so really just a comparison of all the schools that submit that report and how they're spending their funds by category.
So just realize we're in the bottom, I think the top of the bottom third. And funding of school districts, yet we're, let me say, nineteenth largest?
Nineteenth largest.
Nineteenth largest, that's how far down we are in funding and overall, just with all the inefficiencies of our size, buses, you know, all that compared to districts, they're smaller, you know, more compact, like that's where we fall. You know, you'd almost think at seventeenth or nineteenth, we'd almost be like nineteenth, but we're in the five hundreds.
And um as it relates to more information, if you want more information, what does general administration mean? We have a huge booklet of account codes and functions and how we're supposed to code things, so it gives some uh general descriptions. General administration consists of activities, concerns with establishing policy, operating schools in the school system, providing essential facility services for staff and pupils, and also include community relations. So that would be what makes up our general administration and we have descriptions for each one of those if you were interested in further information. There's a, I this this booklet is several pages, I just kept one. Um, but again, this shows our ranking, if you scroll to the bottom, then we get a little bit more detailed in the um fund balance. So this page is particularly interesting if you want to look at our fund balance and what percentage that would be of our total expenses. So at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, we had fourteen oh five 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 three four um as relates to our fund balance, and in order to get the percentage, you divide that by our total expenses for the year, which were one twenty-three oh two six nine two two, it was about four, I think it was eleven point four two uh percent. So that's how you get those percentages, just divide by our total expenditures. And it changes by year, um not only by the dollar amount in fund balance, by our total expenditures, as they go up, the percentage changes and likewise when they go down. So big impact either way.
Christine, I know back in June, we, when we had our budget hearing for original budget, um we were looking at an estimated fund balance of eleven point one eight, to be precise. Um, fund balance for this current year, where do we stand now?
This current year, I think we're gonna be about the same. We're preparing our budget amendment now, but given what John had talked about earlier with the foundation not increasing and then having some um decreases in the mental health and now with at-risk, I don't know if we're gonna have the actual for the budget amendment. But I think we're about equal to what we had estimated with three million dollars uh pull from fund balance. I think overall we're down, was it six students or nine students overall from what we budgeted?
Six, we almost hit it right, we're six less students than what we budgeted.
Well, big picture, John, kudos to you because your first three years in our district from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three, you raised our fund balance by seven million dollars, three million of that was ESSER. You know, kudos to you, you did prioritize this.
But, you know, at the same point, it's why you do it to be you be you be fiscally, you know, frugal because unfortunately, this year we're in the opposite trend, right? And, you know, but we were still able to service kids, keep our people, do all those things you try and do. And I pray somehow we find a way to do it for this next year, but I'm scared about it.
I think we all are, yep, so thank you for having that vision.
And not to reduce his vision, but we have strategically. There's a little bit more to it, so. Uh, we have intentionally looked at fund balance, we've had conversations with the board about, um in the policy, the goal was ten percent. Does that make sense, given our size and what we do and the drastic changes in our funding? Um, even back in seventeen eighteen, we strategically sold property to increase our fund balance, so it's been a work in progress. When we hit um five point five percent fund balance, we did that not only using fund balance with drastic multimillion dollars of cuts over the years, so it was a very painful time. And we strategically made movements to increase that, to make sure that we wouldn't be in that type of a situation again. Unfortunately, ESSER helped promote that quite a bit.
Absolutely, yep.
But it's there's a lot of credit for Dr. Pinknick.
And and remember, at five percent, you're at risk of state takeover.
Yeah.
You can go down real fast, especially with the increasing budget too.
Yeah. Um, and so this is kind of a summary, um we tried to put together some notes as relates to why some of this happened. Um, we have a a lot of historical knowledge right here in these two seats. Um, when we put out the uh document that we looked at, um at the bottom, at the bottom of the presentation, the historical reductions, this was a very painful time, um especially in the business office, but uh throughout the district. It was multimillion dollars of cuts in addition to pulling from fund balance. It was not fun times and that was several years in the making. So when we look at the percentages, there's some specific things that stand out in our um between fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, all the way to fifteen, uh sixteen, seventeen. Um, we didn't recover from the huge loss mid-year in fiscal twelve of four hundred and seventy per student. Mid-year, there was a reduction of four hundred and seventy dollars per student. And we didn't recover that money because that was a strategical, strategic uh structural reduction. We didn't recover that until fiscal seventeen. And then you can look at the historic reductions and see in those years, the multimillion dollars of reductions that we made. Um, you can see in seventeen eighteen, this was a stra- strategic move to increase our fund balance. We had quite a few property sales and that went right into fund balance. Um, in nineteen twenty, we had a weird state aid reduction of a hundred and seventy-five per pupil at the end of the year. They turned around and gave it back to us as the next fiscal fiscal year, so you could see a drastic pull from fund balance and then a drastic add. Um, I think that had to do with where they were funding the money from, so they just swapped it in those fiscal years. But it makes a very big difference in our bottom line and what our books say. Um, and then again, we had the intentional investment of the ESSER dollars for a couple of years.
Back in twenty seventeen eighteen, what was there besides Old Mission? I remember that property.
We sold the uh property over here on Thirteenth Street and we sold Cell Towers. There's three property sales. Somewhere in there, I can't remember the year, we also sold the old Long Lake building. I don't know which year it was.
Yeah.
And then we look at the historical, um unfortunately, um during our cyber event, we lost everything past two thousand seventeen eighteen and I'm not gonna make Wes go find it, because again, that is a painful thing to fill out. Uh, but we have the past information going all the way back to two thousand one to two thousand four. If you look specifically, um these are in alphabetical order, Closing Bertha Boss, Closing East Bay, Closing Glen Hummus, Closing Norris, Closing Saban and Oak Park, and that doesn't even include Old Mission and uh Interlocken. Can you imagine running all of those elementary buildings with our current budget? And total student enrollment, that's a lot of elementary schools.
What I didn't understand was how you eliminated nursing efficiencies.
Well, yeah.
I mean, there are certain categories, I, what the heck does that mean?
Well, we used to have ner- nurses on staff, yeah.
At like, like a lot of them, but only two.
We only have two for the whole district. We used to have one in every building, right?
Every building.
Almost every building.
Libraries.
And you see counselors reduced in here.
Yeah.
Oh, you you'll see like all the curriculums that we talked about, all the curriculum, many of these have never been restored, many.
And you can see on here, uh the last, uh first page, um class size, there were several increases to class size over the years. I mean, two thousand eleven, twelve was one point six million worth. So it gives you a perspective of over the years, uh what impacted our fund balance. Again, we did not just pull from fund balance, it was strategic. Um, to make some um drastic reductions in our total costs, but not the whole kit and caboodle at once because it would be really hard to sustain. That's what I have for my presentation.
Is there another?
What questions do you have?
Really good stuff. Thanks so much for bringing it all together. Very good, so good.
And so I think, you know, one thing I would wanna say that Christine mentioned is, you know, there's lots here that can be changed, you know, and 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 formulas all that, but if the board has to give feedback in January is kind of the time, right? I mean, the governor has her state of the state in late January, early February, budget comes out two or three weeks later, her first version. That's when we start really rolling, so, you know, you have to look at priorities, those things and you know, we collectively try to get the input from all of our principals, go through these processes and stretch every dollar we can across all these things the very best we can. But, you know, again, based on strategic plan, these kind of things, we get input from the board. And you you ultimately have the constitutional authority as local school district boards to pass that budget. You know, we do our very best, not knowing what that is, generally, when we get to the June board meeting. We don't see it if we're lucky until just before fourth of July, and then it all can change by the way the MDM implements all of it. So it's really, really truly an educated guess and a lot from the experience of people around the room and in the district to try and put that forth the very best you can. But, you know, if there are priorities in one area, that we can do that for sure. Just, you know, we need also directions on what's less priority to not do, because there's not an influx. Like we but we're lucky in in ESSER to have a little bit, to do some, a little extra, you know? And so when we talked about this year, how it kind of felt different in the end, three years in a row, I had money, you know, went from to do class size and and split reductions. This is the first year, we waited and hoped and hoped and hoped and it never came. You know, in fact, a little bit more didn't come until just a month ago. And so that's the input that we need and and there's things we can do if the board wants to not see some things in that. Just know, like I say, it's most likely gonna come at the expense of lowering from somewhere else because I just don't see, we're we're gonna do everything we can to look at revenue generation and those things and and with that. But just, that's where the input's needed from the board, if we feel that way, so.
But I think that's the benefit too of our strategic plan, right, of of really putting a thoughtful process in place. So you're not chasing like the next shiny thing to improve on something but take away from another, it's it's the big picture.
And I think we've had that this past, you know, that our third year here to have that and we're getting ready to kind of take that on again. But just know like our our our, you know, the next strategic plan doesn't necessarily reflect this budget then, you know, because we're starting that before we get there. We really need your thoughts and so collectively, if you have thoughts on that, to let Scott know and, you know, and collectively to to think about that, because we really have to start that process soon. You know, we are already trying to get ideas of what are the states saying, what's revenue looking like, all those kind of things, preparing. And then the board obviously has to determine what's your comfort level with fund balance. You know, all these things strategically is we have to know that for Christine and her team to start to build this thing to be able to, you know, because we we'd like to try and have an idea staff before spring break. You know, to have an idea of where we're getting close to assignments and stuff like that, so I guess I'm telling you that it's coming soon.
And really, if there's any particular questions, you want more information about a particular area, you know, how much are we spending? Um, what does it look like over the last three years? Um, where does this money go? We certainly can provide that. November and December is the time to get more information, so we can have a comprehensive conversation in January. Um, I again, I wanna stress, we don't make up the formulas, we just make sure they balance. So certainly happy to change those, just would really like the information in January the latest.
Thank you for putting this together.
Yeah.
Compliment Christine and her team seriously.
It was all Wes and Sammy.
Thank you.
Of course. And I I just wanna stay probably the obvious, that I think we all have really shared values here. We appreciate the input that you get from the staff in the buildings, the teachers and what they need. Um, so like, if we are really as a district evaluating the effectiveness of all these investments that we're making to boost academic achievement and to support mental health and our students and staff, their input is the most important thing. We here as a board only know so much, so I just appreciate the dialogue with the teachers and the principals.
And support staff as well.
Yes.
We have a lot of people that do a lot of, a lot of things that make this thing go much more than I do for sure. I always say, one thing I learned early on is, you know, the support staff of bus drivers, custodians and AAs, they often make this thing work. Yeah, people working cafeteria, all of our support staff, you know, with our professional staff makes this thing run. You know, it can probably go a few days without superintendent, it cannot go without a bus driver or cook, you know, a lot of these other folks for sure.
Yep, no more questions?
And thank you Christine, I know you're trying to minimize your input here, but we know you did a lot of work.
Okay, um yes, thank, it was uh every time I go through any budget presentation, I think I know what I'm talking about and then I feel like I know the lesson. That's okay. So uh moving on, uh public comment, do we have any additional public comment? Okay, uh then we'll move on to closing remarks, thanks, this is a meeting-heavy kind of timeframe. And we're back into uh committee meetings next week, tomorrow. I was like, I feel like it's not next week.
No, not next week, tomorrow.
So back into committee meetings and obviously with the change of uh dates, we're we're straight back into the cycle immediately. Um, and then uh, yeah, so I do appreciate the all the additional meetings and events of of are going on right now. I know it's a lot of extra time, um but with that, we are trying to get some planning done for next year. Reminding uh all board members to submit any study session uh ideas, it's it, nothing is said until January, but just trying to work with Stacy to have a a better plan going into the January meeting because it's not really the best time to make any decisions and um say anything we can do for that. But we have taken all feedback we've received uh already, so.
And Scott, just to be clear, does that include feedback on the dates, like just to make sure people are good with dates?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, we've got some dates laid out, we've got some subjects. It again, like it is every January, I just wanted to have at least the best guess of what everyone will be okay with, so. Um, okay, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting, a second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, meeting adjourned. All those opposed say nay. Meeting adjourned.